All right, it's 6:30. We'll start the meeting. Okay, we already have a personnel executive session on the agenda. We also need to add one more legal and another personnel.
So three?
Yep, we have three altogether. And then, under old business, enhanced energy plan, and under liquor board, we have to add Dollar General second class.
Motion to approve a agenda as amended.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, anything, so we have select board minutes of June 4th, liquor board minutes of June 4th, and select board minutes of June 11th. Did anybody see any errors, omissions, need for corrections? Okay.
What was the third one, Alicia?
That was our special meeting on the 11th. All right, town managers report?
Two things that were in your packet have to do with segment four for the state. So you have Agency of Natural Resources, they're granting approval pending that they cut the trees during the wintertime because of the brown-nosed bat, and then the historic preservation voicing their concerns, and they are working with V-Trans so that V-Trans can get it out to bid this fall. So I just wanted to pass those along to you.
Okay.
Cory Dickman started training on Thursday, June 5th for the bookkeeping position. She's doing really, really well with it. Pat and her have been getting along really well, getting things done. I attended the OMIA stakeholder meeting on June 5th. It was very informative on what they're doing for energy efficiency and updates to the plant. I attended a quick teams meeting with Isaac for the Pittsburgh Village Farm CDBG grant to give the state of Vermont an update on construction costs and timelines. Highway crew took care of the right-of-way area in front of the Old Hound Hall that Tom had mentioned at the last meeting.
Looks nice.
Carpets in the office were cleaned on June 6th. This is hopefully going to become an annual maintenance item. The air conditioning unit, it's on here a couple times. Zach came in today again, played around with some stuff, had to add some kind of fluid to one of them so that we have AC finally on this side of the building.
Thank goodness.
I think we finally figured out thermostats, what controls what. Zach's been boundless energy and huge resource to figure it all out for me. We did the final walkthrough of the Plains Road project with Otter Creek Engineering, Tom Markowski, Sean and I. I did discuss the Jacksons' concerns for their driveway, and Tom said he was going to reach out to them. I let him know about the meeting, the site visit that we did tonight. The delinquent dog licensing letters were mailed on Monday, June 5th. We have had a pretty good response to that. I'd say at least half the people have contacted us and either registered their dogs or let us know that they were deceased. Chad and I met with V-Trans representatives about the no parking signs along Route 7 between Elm Street and Depot Hill, due to the state right-of-way being four rods, there being no curbing between the sidewalk and the existing asphalt, and there not being a green space between the road and the sidewalk. There's not much we can do, and no parking signs cannot be put up.
But we don't need them to ticket people for parking on the sidewalks, correct?
We can ticket them, we can ticket people. They highly suggested we have our PD just start ticketing people. I'm going to put it in the newsletter that I'm working on, that there's no parking on sidewalks, state statute. People are going to start being ticketed for that. They said, once segment two is done, when we're all dead, it'll be taken care of. Sorry, I know that was snarky. V-Trans let me know that segment four is going out to bid, like I told you. The air conditioning issue, blah, blah, blah. I attended an OMIA water meter training for reports in customer data, input and export. This is the new water meters we're switching to. It's going to have the ability for homeowners to be able to go in and see what they're using for water, and if they have a leak or not too, they can get leak alarms, which will be super helpful for people that are concerned about their water usage. Attended a VLCT seminar on disaster planning and recovery. I'm going to follow up with our EMD on a couple of questions I have that came up during the training. I attended the Vermont Government Finance Officers Association meeting on July 11th in Springfield. We discussed capital planning and different bonding and loan options through the Vermont Bond Bank. The second half of the day was about the four new GASB regulations that are taking effect June of this year and June of next year. Statement 101 is going to have the biggest impact on the town of Pittsburgh. I've already started working with Cory on that, so we can make sure we are in compliance. Beamer's came and presented to the staff on July, it says July, June, holy cow, as part of the staff meeting, and they actually sat down with each individual employee after their presentation to answer any further questions and give everybody their login information and pass codes to be able to go in and see their Beamer's account.
Nice.
Royal Group came and put a new sensor in the PD garage. BTS came and installed the access point for the new PD cameras. The cameras are here. We're working with Motorola. It looks like by mid-July, everything will be installed, but the access point was the first part of that. We started working on June billing for water and wastewater. Bills will be going out next week with a due date of August 5th. And I attended Rutland Regional Planning Commission's annual meeting last night. They voted in their new officers for a start date of July 1. They have also released a new commissioner handbook that has a lot of useful information about Regional Planning Commission in it. For those that don't know a lot about Regional Planning Commission, anyone can read it. It's right on their website. When you put rutlandrpc.org, it's like right on the front page. They've also partnered with Cedars, Real Rutland Initiative, to create a real Rutland map. It's in the beginning stages, but will show local historical, cultural, and recreational locations. It already has like all the historic markers in the Rutland area, has all of our covered bridges, and has all of the rec centers.
Oh, cool.
And it has hours of operation if it's handicap accessible, pet friendly, et cetera. It's kind of neat. It's a growing thing.
Nice.
I think that's it.
All right. Anybody have any questions for Ann? Okay. Any select board member remarks? No?
No.
Okay. The Pittsburgh Village Farm is having their groundbreaking tomorrow from 5:00 to 7:00. I think weather, regardless of, regardless of the weather. Any public comment of anything that's not on the agenda? No? Okay. All right, old business. Pamela Jackson's driveway complaint. So we just went and did a site visit on that and looked at that. No, was there any further discussion that anyone wanted to bring up?
I think we should have Tom or one of the representatives come in, go with Ann, and take a look at that, and see if we can get them on board before we have to have them come in front of us. Maybe they can just get the situation solved.
Yep.
I just want to finish. And also, would you make a comment about those line markers that were missing?
Yep.
Did you hear me make that comment?
Yeah, I did.
Yeah, it's not a complaint, but I think-
Is it two of them?
There's one on each end, yeah. Those should be reset, and that's going to be at their whim as well.
That's too bad, the marble ones are gone.
I don't, yeah, we can ask about it, but it's too bad, but.
Yep.
I will follow up one.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay.
Can I add to that?
Sure.
By the way, I think we should have Wilk here, Tim Rice or something, to look at that as well, because I don't know if we want to get another contractor plus Wilk at the same time and have another patch. So it'd be a good thing, I think, if Pike does the whole thing, or Wilk, I'm sorry.
Okay.
So get ahold of Tim Rice and-
I know, either way, it's got to all be done at the same time, so.
So I submitted an estimate for John Weatherby. He's the gentleman that did the driveway initially. So can he be involved?
How, I don't know how best that would work, Ann, for, you're the one doing the coordinating, so.
Maybe the best thing to do is get Tom out here to take a look first, and see if we need to-
Well, Tom was here today. Tom booked at that driveway today at 3:00.
With Ann, or one of us?
Well, not with Ann, but-
Yeah. And I just, go ahead.
They're going to have to coordination with Pike as well.
No, Wilk.
Wilk.
I confused it.
David Wilk, right? Or you're going to end up with, if you have two contractors, you're going to have two seams there, not just the welded seam.
I'll get together with Tom, and then I will retract all to you. Okay, I got your information, so, okay.
All right, great. So we'll coordinate that with-
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Thank you for taking the time to do the site visit. I appreciate it.
Sure, absolutely. Okay, Rutland Regional Planning Commission's 2026 mapping.
So I sent all of our suggestions to Logan and Devin. I have not heard back, but they did give us a deadline of June 24th instead, if we had any more suggestions, comments, et cetera. And I know that Dave and Mark had asked about the land use part, and how it affected if it was rural or agricultural, et cetera. And I printed the land use chapter for you, and it is somewhere in this pile, and I'm going to end up dumping the pile, or it might be on the printer still. But I did print the land use chapter of the new 2026 plan. I have not had a chance to read it yet, to go over what it would be, but if you're interested, you can take the copy. I'll find it right after this, and you can read it. I read, they have one-page summaries, too. I didn't like the one-page summary, so I wanted to dive deeper, and I figured you would too, so I did print the chapter for you. Hopefully that'll answer questions. And I will read it before the 24th and respond accordingly as well, but.
So they've offered to move the deadline out till when?
June 24th, which is next week.
But we already have our-
We, so what I had told them initially, and I got this email Thursday, the 12th, we met on the 11th, and I had told them before that, I had sent an email on the 10th saying we wanted the extension. We were meeting on the 11th. We were going to follow up at this meeting if there was anything else that we needed to, because I didn't know where we were going to be at, at the end of last meeting, and if there was going to be follow-up needed. So I asked them to at least extend it until tomorrow, and they said that they could do until the 24th in case something further needed, researcher comes up or whatever.
But all that's been submitted to them, and when did they say they were going to get back to assignment today?
I'm assuming as soon as possible. Devin's wife just had a baby on Sunday, so he's checking emails and stuff. I haven't heard from Logan since I sent the email with all of the suggestions. I have a feeling he's slightly buried at the moment.
So that deadline was just to get in what?
What we wanted for changes, and I was trying to explain the water, wastewater ones, and I told them I was more than happy to bring one of the maps with it all highlighted, because I think it'd be easier than trying to explain over the phone or over email where those delineations are. So I'm waiting to hear back.
All right.
So worst case, I'm going to be running a map to them, closer to the 24th with everything outlined, again.
So did anybody have anything that they thought of after that they wanted to add, or everything?
I thought it was pretty complete.
Taking care of on the 11th?
Would you think?
Okay.
I don't like it in general.
And I understand that.
They, I think, they are going to answer us though before they sign off on that, because we're not going to, unless it's changed, I don't see them signing off on that.
There's a lot of, it was actually brought up last night, that they still have a couple of revisions they have to go through internally, so.
So they're going to be a couple months before?
Yeah, it's going to be.
They're not even sending it to, I'm going to call it LRB, because it keeps changing, the Land Use Reverb Review Board. That's what they call it now, is LRB.
Bob.
They're sending it to them at the beginning of the year, so they're working-
So we're going to hear more, okay.
The Board of Commissioners is getting it in September to review again, to any final edits from Board of Commissioners, so.
So we'll hear from them again. Okay.
Or I can bring concerns when I go to a Board of Commissioners meeting, either way.
As long as they fill in all the stuff that we put, I don't think we'll have too many complaints, but they have to get everything fixed. You just can't leave it hodgepodge like that, yeah.
Okay. Great. Okay, Fire Hill Concerns. Ongoing situation, where are we at with that?
We have a ZA that's not responding to my emails.
Oh.
I was told by Mr. Winslow at the last meeting to send an email for a response.
Yes, because that's kind of what our next step was supposed to be. Oh, is he on?
He's not on.
Oh. Okay.
Explain some more in executive session, then.
Okay, sure. Okay. All right. And so is there anybody here that would like to talk about that now?
Absolutely.
Okay.
So first and foremost, currently, I have been harassed twice, and a third time followed today by Cole Webster and Ashley Forrest. Cole stopped at the intersection of Fire Hill Road and Whipple Hollow Road. I was on the side of the, on the dirt there, looking at emails on my phone, and not paying attention to anybody around me or anything, and all of a sudden, there's a knock on my window. He motioned me to open my door. Come on out, come on out. I just sit, put my car in, drive, and drove away. So he followed me. I stopped just past John Ujier's driveway, pulled off the side of the road. Again, he stopped right next to me and motioned as if shooting me with a gun. Okay? That's right, that's right. Okay, I'm talking, you guys can, you'll have your time. Right?
Go ahead.
Listen, we got to go one at a time here. You can say whatever you want, but let him finish, all right?
Okay, so with that said, thank you.
Guys, one at a time.
I know for a fact that John Ujier has Cole on his video, on a video film on his phone.
So I think also, I think we should maybe cut this back to, so what, we initially were talking about the Fire Hill concerns. So this is like a whole nother situation.
Right.
If you're alleging harassment, that's a whole different situation, but I would like, that's not in the-
Couple being harassed as well.
Thank you, Alicia. I appreciate it. Thank you.
So, so wait a minute, wait a minute.
I know, so hold on, so we will, we're just going to have one person at a time. So, Greg, if there's anything, we have had, already heard from you at a couple meetings, so I think if there's anybody else, I'm sorry, Kelly, did you, hold on one second?
I'm just going to ask people on Zoom, if they want to comment, please raise your hand, and you will be recognized.
By the chair.
By the chair, because I will motion to her that there is someone on Zoom.
And identify.
Yeah, if we could just get, we will need just for the, for the meeting minutes, if you could please just-
And this is pretty critical. If you have anything to say, please talk to the chair, okay? That way we can keep, and everybody will get their chance, but just talk to the chair, please.
Okay, so. Please talk to the chair. Yeah, please talk to the chair.
In one moment.
One second, please. So Greg, again, note, not, just to not repeat, because we have heard what you've had to say at a few different meetings, like about the actual, what's going on on Fire Hill. So if there's anything new to add, you can say it now, otherwise we're going to let other people speak, because there's obviously a lot more people here.
Yes. So this is all about the fact that the select board and our zoning commissioner, or whatever he is, did not do their job.
Okay.
Okay, nobody did the job. It was gone and forgotten. That's number one. So number two, now we've contacted, and maybe something has been done. I'd like to know what has been done, because there are three illegal, unregistered junkyards on Fire Hill Road. That's what they're classified as, junkyards. There's no fencing in front of them, no nothing, no boundary, no nothing. There's wire fence, you can see all the junk and garbage on every property, all three of them.
Okay, thank you.
So that needs to be addressed. And then last but not least, my good neighbor here, Artie Forrest, has been out digging in what I believe was his septic field below his trail, his home, and now it's a big mud pit. It's a big mud pit, and the machine is still there. He's redirected water through it. It's going down into the woods beyond that property, which is not his property. That belongs to Ray Forrest. And then on top of that, as mentioned, I was harassed.
Okay.
Again, today.
Okay, that is a separate issue.
And this is all because nobody did anything three years ago when this started.
Okay, all right.
So when I get harassed, or hit, or beat up, you will be sued. I can promise you that.
We don't need any-
And one last thing. I have nothing against the Forrest family. They seem to be very nice people, but their yards are despicable. How's that? I mean, Artie's a great guy.
All right, hold on, thank you. So, and then, I'm sorry, who's on Zoom? Can you let, can you, I can't see your name, I'm sorry, because. Okay.
Cole and Ashley.
Okay, what would you like to say?
Man, I just want to say, you know, I know about my brother-in-law's pig farm up there. It's totally legal. You have to go up there and look at it. He did make a spot to swim, because any animal deserves to swim. And then another issue is like-
I also can't say he just dug a hole.
He just dug a hole. He didn't dig a hole, man. And another thing is, all them cars up there are hobbies. Just as well as my father-in-law Wayne's house. Them cars are all hobbies.
And for Greg, for you to say that the select board is not doing their job, do you have any idea what we have all done through already? Because we're all being harassed as well. There's been fines, there's been cops called numerous times.
My wife has cancer.
You can't say that the select board is not doing their job.
They are.
Because you're also harassing as well.
Now I'm speaking my right-
No, no, that's enough.
Okay. Thank you, Cole and Ashley. Was there anything else that you'd like to add?
I just wanted to add with the harassment, it's gone as far as even John Ujier almost ran me and my daughter all the way through it. And now Greg, you're driving by daily taking pictures, so how can you say we're threatening you?
That's harassment, Greg.
Okay. All right, thank you. Who else would like to?
I'm not exactly sure what all is going on, but I can tell you-
Joe, Joe, just say your name for the-
Joe Rapitort, I'm also a resident on Fire Hill Road. If you're being harassed, that gentleman there with the badge is who you need to talk to.
I have.
Okay, well, don't threaten them, because they have nothing to do with it. You're harassed, you're threatened, whatever, that's the gentleman to talk to, the police, not the board.
Yeah, address the chair.
Yeah, I just don't want this to get into a heated, well, it's already heated, but any, would you guys like to?
We're in the same boat, so we-
Sorry, just say your name.
So it's escalated to harassment. We've issued statements, we've called the police. We also have Cole and Ashley on camera. We've spit it to the town and the police, harassing, making threats.
I'd just like this Mary Rubinsky.
Can I tell you something?
Hold on one second. After, after, go ahead.
Mary Rubinsky?
I live on the Old Hamilton Road, and I hate to have to tell my company to go down Fire Hill and turn right if you have to dump. Sorry, sorry, ma'am.
Sorry, thank you.
I mean, to have to tell your company, especially people from out of state, who are coming to see the beauty of Vermont. And you have to tell them that you have to show, tell them to, either they come in from West Rutland, have to tell them they have to go take the grounds, dump, or they come in from the Fire Hill and turn right from another dump. Welcome to beautiful Vermont.
All right, would you guys like to say something?
I got a bone to pick with you. You advertised in the paper.
Take your seat, take your seat.
Take a look at them and feed them on this horse.
Take your seat. Go back to your seat. We're not going to have anyone else running up to this board. If you want to say your name and make a comment, please do.
I said what I wanted to say. Did you hear me? And these horses are all over 20 years old. Two of them are pushing 25 years old.
The neighbors said they're young horses. They're getting ready to call the animal control and shit on me. Take a look at the horses and point out which one-
Who are you addressing?
Excuse me?
Who are you addressing?
It was all in the, it was all in the paper.
Wait a minute, we're going to go one at a time. Are you addressing the chair?
In the newspaper, it said you went for a ride and you seized one of my horses in very poor condition. They wrote that in the paper.
I hadn't seen that, but address your comments to the chair.
It's not in the paper.
Which paper?
The reporter. The reporter.
Sir, are you done? I just want to make sure we go one at a time.
You know, all this started from a family feud. He went around and he spread it all.
Hold on, please.
Rainy Forrest went around and got all the other neighbors to go against us. You know what? I will tell you guys, my yard is a mess. I will also tell you, we have a lot of stuff. We've lived there for 44 years. We don't have a cellar, we don't have no storage, we don't have a garage. So everything that we have is there. And I apologize if you think it's a dump, but one person's prep junk might be another person's treasure. And you guys, I need to mind your own business. If you guys have life of your own, you would mind your own business.
You gotta address the chair.
And you'd be too busy. Don't mind everybody else's business. And another thing, my husband works his fingers to the bone to take care of them ourselves.
See, another thing, our vehicles, we use them for money. Okay, we're going to stop. You've got to state your name for the secretary at least, before you start talking.
Bonnie Forrest, I'm sorry. Don't move me.
Sir, we are doing one person at a time. I'm sorry.
One more, or you will be disconnected.
You know what else I would like to know? What I ever did to you, 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 that's what I want to know.
You gotta address the chair.
We just, yeah, we can't have it get personal like that, I'm sorry.
It's personal. It's very personal.
I know it's personal to you. I just mean, within the, within the meeting context.
Because you know what? Did you read the reporter?
I didn't.
Well, you need to get a copy of it, because it's not very nice what they wrote, and it's all a bunch of lies. Why? You too, your name was the one.
It's very poor.
Take a look at them horses.
All right, stop talking. Stop talking. If you're not going to address the chair, we're going to have to excuse you. I just want you to address the chair, please. That's all we're asking.
I understand that this is very emotional for everyone.
It is, and you know what? We're trying to keep our cool here, really bad. We are.
I know.
But you know what? We've been dealing with this shit for three, four years, too.
10 years.
So where it really comes down to-
And you know what? Technically, I lived there before anybody lived there, before Ham, 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 before anybody. You saw, it's been the same way every time. You saw what you were moving in next to. If you didn't like it, you shouldn't have moved there.
All right, thank you. So, and really, this comes down to only what has to do with our ordinance and what that's being, how that's being violated, and then that does also come down to our zoning administrator, who's unfortunately not here at this meeting. We, so this is, we've, and so we've heard from everyone, and we do appreciate everyone's input.
Well, I don't think we've heard from a couple in fact, have any, do you have anything else to say? If you do, please state your name and say it.
Here to look and listen.
Go ahead, Lindsay.
I just wanted to say that I don't think people understand, like, the impact of what all this is doing us in the paper. I don't know, we weren't here, so obviously there's no one on our side to be able to be here in defense of that, but they were sitting here, obviously, just, it was like a mudslinging contest, it looked like, in the paper, saying we're feeding our pigs me. I know it has nothing to do with you guys, but this is all things that were quoted from your guys' meeting, so that's why I'm bringing it to you. I read the paper, and it was, it was very disturbing to see all the people making up lies. If you have a problem, and we're really breaking ordinances, then come to us, let's figure it out, we'll do whatever we got to do. If we are truly breaking ordinances, that's fine. But to say we're feeding pigs me and all that, that was absolute lies. Animals aren't skinny, our animals aren't being left for dead. I don't even know why any of that was said, and I'm really confused as to, I didn't think that's what this was for. And that whole paper was like, three pages of the paper with everybody's names in it, all of us, you guys saying stuff about us.
They talked bad about Officer Warfield, they talked bad about Dan.
It was, it was really bad, and that's why we're here today.
And it was apparently lies.
Lindsay, go ahead, I'm sorry.
That's just why, no, you're all right. It's just, it's upsetting. We're all really upset, because, you know, we have tried to like fix things, we've tried to clean up, we have tried to do some things, but it's the lies, and most of it came from here. I mean, that's where all of it was quoted from, was I think it was the last meeting. And it was literally three frickin' pages of, I don't know, all kinds of people.
Lies.
Ujiers, I know there was a Ujier quoted in there saying lies about us, and another lady about horses, and just, unbelievable stuff.
Could I, could I ask your name, I don't-
Lindsay Williams.
Williams?
Yeah.
And when was that in the reporter?
I couldn't find the exact date.
Last Wednesday.
Yeah, I was going to say about a week ago.
Last Wednesday.
It was like, it was, it was quite, it was on the front- It was like, it was, it was quite, it was on the front page, and it was like dispute of Fire Hill, and it had like so many people's names in it, and it, it was just awful, because stuff, like, the stuff in there, I mean, most of it wasn't true, yes, there is some masses, we're not denying that, none of us are gonna sit here and say, we don't have a mass, and yeah, it might be upsetting to people, I don't know why it bothers them so bad, but, whatever. But, uh, to resort to absolutely making up one hundred percent fiction, and then sitting here saying it at a town meeting with nothing, no facts to back any of it up, and then having it be on the front page of the paper.
Deformation of character and slander.
Very, very upsetting, that's, that's what I wanted to come to say.
Okay.
Thank you.
Brett Erickson here, um, I came because, uh, Cole and Ashley, um, followed my son all the way up from, uh, sorry, big arts and little, uh, bodies, and, uh, you know, he ended up being into our driveway, and we did call, but I wanted to make sure that this is getting addressed, because it's getting to the point, you know, my son is seventeen, he has nothing to do with this, um, so, and I got a phone call about it, so, I had to go home, and, and there's been other stuff with, uh, anyhow, with me.
Okay, yes.
There's one more gentleman hasn't spoke back there, do you, you want a chance, sir? Okay, yep.
Ashley, go ahead.
Hey, I was just gonna say, um, if you don't walk in your driveway, then maybe you shouldn't be in our driveway, because you almost ran my parents' chickens over. My dad ran the bash, you can ask any one of our family members what he did when he accelerated that truck. If that truck, 'cause there's fresh rock right there, and John Newdeer did the same thing, when me and my daughter are walking out there, if you guys hit her with a rock.
You're gonna die.
You're gonna have a whole new ballgame on your hands, so, if you stay out of my driveway, I'll stay out of yours, and hold that. Don't blame it on the select board not addressing it, because you're also doing it yourself, so if you stay away from us, we'll stay away from you, plain and simple, our who goes. I also have video of proof of what him, Greg, Greg going back and forth from house twenty-four seven, I do have these videos, and I apologize, today's my daughter's birthday, so I wasn't able to make it in, but I can show you guys proof if you want to see it.
Okay, thank you, Ann?
Um, I just wanna answer, you stated something about the animals, I can give you a copy of the report that was read at the last meeting about the, the quality of the animals, I think that's what the article referred to, so if you'd like a copy of it, just let me know, and I'm more than happy.
You need to read the reporter.
To share a copy.
That's what we're here for, and it came from here, also, your son last night, his son last night, that's when Ashley and Cole went up to your driveway, he came flying by my house.
No, 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 listen, we're gonna talk to the chair, or we're done talking about it?
They've been doing it, they fly by my house like sixty miles an hour. And I'm not one to call the cops, but you know what, I'm putting up a camera, and I'm gonna tape, I'm gonna tape them, what they do in front of my house, and I am gonna report it to the cop every single time they do it, I guess I gotta play this way.
Well, so that is the thing, I mean, we can't, hearing about something after the fact that should be brought to law.
They fly by my house all the time.
About that, so that's.
They dig up all the road out there from flying, when they hit that pavement, it's like, they know they're in front of my house, they kick down that truck, right down, so it kicks down the lawn, they fly, I swear to God, by the time they get to my neighbors, they're going fifty or sixty miles an hour.
Bonnie, that, so may, next time, if that's, that's something.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna put up, I hate to play that way, but I guess that's the way we gotta do it.
All right, so just, so we're gonna move on, I think everyone has had a chance to say something, um.
I think we got off the subject of the truck, the trucks in the yards, and the cleanup.
Yep.
Of the yards.
Yes, we did get off the topic on that, um, and our zoning administrator's not here, and.
But I, I was told that you was informed about it last time, and did he do anything about it?
Which is, which is an issue that we need to deal with.
Yeah.
There, there have been actions taken, I don't think we've got a, a record right now of actions that were taken, um, but if I remember right, notices were served, but we'll, we'll have to take this up and, you know, we put it in a time frame.
Letters have gone unanswered, I believe.
But I think at this point, have been, all letters have gone out to everyone, Ann?
In twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four, yes, I don't believe any letters have been sent in twenty twenty-five.
Okay.
So another word, yeah.
Greg, yes.
So, maybe if you could copy the Town of Pittsburgh Municipal Ordinance, outdoor storage of junk and junk vehicles, they can understand why I'm complaining, and many others. It says it clearly, it doesn't, it's not about anyone in particular, but it, it abandoned, abutting property owner, enforcement office, highway, household appliances, junk means old or discarded scrap, metal, steel, other metals, materials including but not limited to, tires, household appliances, furniture, rope, rags, batteries, glass, it, it contains everything.
There is a town ordinance.
Yeah, there is.
Yes.
And, and the notices that were sent, I believe cited the ordinance.
I believe they included a copy of the ordinance.
Right.
Yeah.
And I don't know if they got.
What I'm looking at, Ann?
Yes.
Well, those are the ones that we got back like four months later, correct?
Twelve, three, okay, all right.
So, one, the ones that were sent certified mail, by my understanding, were returned, that were sent certified, it's the one that, because he sent them both ways, regular mail and certified mail.
Which, which one?
Certified mail came back about three months later, the regular mail ones did not come back, by what I was told.
Okay.
But that was before I became town manager, and I did not, I was not privy to the entire conversation between Jeff and Dave on how things were handled. I had thought that Jeff had given Dave the copies, Dave had handed them to Chief to be delivered. I, there's too many missing links right now for me to piece together exactly what happened during that timeframe.
Okay. I also thought, too, some of the unregistered cars got registered, correct?
We can't, we can't tell, because there's no stickers on license plates.
There's no way to know.
Well, I thought somebody mailed in some.
Not only does a vehicle need to be registered, it must be inspected to not be considered junk.
Our junk ordinance needs to be updated to reflect the fact that there's now no stickers on.
Right, and I guess you're right, okay.
It used to be we got stickers up in town last year. And it is in my pile, so.
Update. We went to court about this once too already.
Okay.
With the town and all that, and it was thrown out.
Okay.
Because of recreational vehicles and all that, I mean, like mug vehicles and things that are actually used or not.
Maybe that's what I remember hearing, I just knew that.
Find us junk.
Yeah, okay.
If they were, and they're not in pieces and all that, and we did register them, we did do that, we might have been the ones that sent it in.
Okay.
I think, or it was brought up in court or whatever happened, but, but we've already kind of been through this.
Yeah, all right.
You guys did your part, you brought us to court.
Okay. Yes, Joe.
Can I just make a comment, uh, Joe Repitor again from Fire Hill Road, I find it kinda interesting that people talk about a backcountry road that isn't traveled very much, other than locals, but the collapsed garage over by the mobile station, not an eyesore, Pearl's Pizza Pit, not an eyesore, just a couple of properties on a back road that's hardly traveled by anybody, those were the things that I saw when I first came into town, and I just looked at it as another country town, and kept going. Why people have to make such a hoo-ha about some properties on a backcountry road that's hardly traveled, I don't know.
All right, appreciate that. Okay, we're gonna wrap this up for now, so, um, I guess the next steps are, we're still trying to get ahold of zoning administrator, and.
What happens when you, I'm sorry, John Newdeer, what happens when you can't get ahold of your zoning administrator?
We had him here at the last meeting via Zoom.
Did.
He's not normally, uh, doesn't normally attend a meeting unless we have him.
Well, it sounds like he's not responding to email either.
I've gotta look into that.
Sounds like that's an issue this week, yes.
So they asked, that's a separate concern we have to deal with?
Not sure if they wanna say, I saw.
Okay.
Can I ask, Artie?
Ashley or Cole, did you have anything else to say? Did you have your hand up, we couldn't tell?
Well, I'm sorry, um, I just, I wanted to bring up the fact, um, I know you guys are talking about the cars right now and stuff, but Aaron Newdeer and John Newdeer were talking about my dog that passed away, and everybody's talking about the dog, well, the funny thing is, nobody mentioned about the decon that was thrown on my property, and I was currently feeding the farm cats, and if you ask Sandy Forrest, any of those guys up there, they saw it with their own eyes, every single animal died the same day, how did that happen? So, besides the harassment, I would like to know who throws decon out with kids that plan the property? I have pictures of all my cats, all the farm cats, everybody that died. So I think that's a favorite issue besides just the, the junk cars and the harassment as well.
Okay.
And that's something that I take being very, very serious with kids around.
When was that, Ashley? When was that?
Um, that was right when Aaron started playing about the dog dying, I never said nothing about the cats, but the cats were, the following week, they,
It was the saddest thing you would ever see in your life, I thought they had rabies, and turns out they were playing them.
And I'm pretty sure it was decon, because you guys were bringing up, uh, all the neighbors were complaining about a rat problem, and I, soon as I heard about the rat problem, all the cats are dead. I just don't understand who in their right mind would throw decon out with kids and animals without telling anybody.
This is down at, at, uh, your place by Teresa's?
Yes, that's correct. There's a lot, a lot of things that I have complained about, but between John, Brett, Greg, Aaron Newdeer, you guys have pushed me to the limit, and there's a lot of stuff that's gonna be on.
We can't do the name thing, Ashley.
Okay.
Thanks for the other.
All right, yeah, thank you. Okay, Cole?
Good.
One more question, Cole, and then.
Yeah, I do got a question off, so, uh, about, I know, Alicia, you were talking about something, uh, I wouldn't, uh, to be honest with you, I would never pull a gun on no one, uh, my family's not about that, you know, I don't hold guns on people, when you have a gun in your possession, it's gone, uh, to be, honestly, I'm scared of guns, and, uh, I don't know the gun, I, it's like, it's like, it seems like us, you know, our families are getting so harassed, you know.
They're really just bringing the family feud, they're taking a family feud to the town, and where, and all the rich people.
It's the worst thing in life can be, like, you know, family be like that with family, and then you get the neighbor, you get the little gophers in there that don't tell, you know, uh, never harass Brett, you know, uh, but the other thing is, it's just.
See, we've not cleaned our property up, we've been working on it, it's not something that's gonna happen over time.
You know, it's really not, you know, we have, you know.
They've been working on it, and they know that.
Most parents that have a daughter like us can't raise a daughter like us, you know, so, it's, you know, it's, it's a special thing, so, we're trying to do the right thing, Artie, uh, Papa, and Grandma try to do the right thing, and definitely Artie, uh, little Artie, you know, he works for the league, he takes care of bunch of people, you know, he does the right thing, and you guys are out there really harassing somebody that should never be harassed, uh, after me, my wife, her and Artie are the only ones that bought their property around that horse.
All right, Cole, Cole, we gotta, we do have to wrap this, we have to wrap this up, and I think any other complaints about harassment do need to be going through law enforcement. Okay, we are gonna wrap this up, this has been almost, um, that's what, how it has to go, I mean, we can't do anything, the board can't address this, those particular complaints. Did you just cut him off, or is he, I can't hear him?
Nice.
Okay, we're gonna, yeah, let's.
Where's Art? Oh, senior, um, do you want these entered into the, the record or whatever?
Do you want them entered into the thing? Yeah.
Couldn't you tell me when you, they were taken about?
Last night.
Last night?
Last night.
Thank you. Which was the eighteen?
Seventeen.
Seventeen.
That's why they're kinda dark.
All of them?
Yeah, they were all taken at the same time.
Thank you.
It was in the, last night evening.
Well, in the veterinary report, we got on the horses, said they were fine.
Yeah.
I mean, they're old, and they're not fat, but they're, they've got feed, they've got shelter, so I don't understand.
I think. I think there was only one issue that was brought up by the state vet, and that was one pony that needed a trim, other than that, they said they were, then they, other than that, they, they, they wrote it up, we took that in.
Yeah.
So. She's been trimmed, and she's been trimmed.
Yep. Okay.
The veterinary checked them out and said they were fine.
Did you have anything else, Dan, before we?
Uh, how many horses are at your place, Artie?
Two ponies and two horses.
Thank you.
He can't hear well, that's why you gotta speak up, so he can hear you.
Okay, thank you.
That's why he talks loud too, 'cause he can't hear.
Okay. All right, I appreciate everyone coming. And I am sorry that that was in the paper, I didn't see that, I don't know how that was written up, but.
If you wanna see a copy of it, I don't want.
It was in the same one my wife was written up.
Oh, well, then I have it, I just haven't read it yet. Okay.
Because they talked about everybody, and it was all, all lies.
It would be nice to, if this is future meetings, and we're not here, if everybody's not allowed to sit here and like trash talk us and say all these rules.
I'd like to know when you're gonna.
As good as you guys have done tonight, saying like, you know, that doesn't have to do this, doesn't have to do that, that would be.
Yeah, we, we try to, I think, speaking for myself at least, we try to listen to everybody, there are limits on what we can do about some of this, we have to limit it.
Yeah, when you're talking about me, and I didn't even know that they were, so I can stick up for myself.
It felt like, like it was a town meeting, and everybody here was talking about us, and we're on the outside having no idea anything's even being said, and.
And it wasn't like specific people were invited and you weren't, I think, some people look at the agenda, you know, if you look at our agendas.
It's always open to all of you.
Yeah.
So we gotta come, everyone?
Well, or you could just go online on our website, we'll tell you the agenda.
If the agenda, if it's on the agenda, absolutely come, yeah, and it will be posted, so.
And we're trying, we are trying to.
Yeah, we're not like that, but I guess we're gonna be changing from old people to modern people. That can be arranged, I can learn.
It ain't easy, Bon.
I, I think the, I think the important point is, if there are ordinances that the zoning person has to execute or go through, then they have to be followed. And I'm not saying that he's followed through on every one, he's tried some, but it's not happened the way it should be, so if there's ordinances, he does need to follow through on it.
Right.
But you're always welcome at any meeting, anytime you see anything on the agenda, come.
Absolutely.
All of you. So, thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, um, we're gonna.
Guys to head out first, that way it's all separated.
We don't have to wear wings.
I'm headed to you.
Concerning Fire Hill Road. You guys know that there's a big crack in front of my house, and it looks like the road is gonna fly out of that ditch.
They didn't do stuff they could do.
Nobody answered, making a note? How's that for an answer? We'll have Chad look at it.
So are you in the paved part?
Yeah. Uh, it's, well, it's always wet, because it's always shaded.
Yep.
And, like, almost from my driveway down, huge crack, and you can see how the road is just kinda starting to go a little bit towards the drainage ditch.
Okay.
I think we can have Chad take a look at it.
Right, yeah, Ann, Ann took note.
Thanks, Joe.
Thanks for letting, giving us the heads up.
That was actually the whole reason I was here.
Oh. Yeah, please. Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, we have, um, regional request for one B designation.
Dave. He might not be okay with just one.
Um, so where are we with the one B, 'cause did that, were we waiting for the map stuff?
We were waiting for the map stuff, um, if we fill this out now, I would, I know that regional really wants this by July first, I really don't want us to sign this yet. We are in the middle of so much stuff with our Pittsburgh Planning Commission, that most of these, I can say, will be adopted, will be adopted, will be adopted, but we're not even, we're not there yet, like, our subdivision bylaws, they're still, they're, the first draft is done, we're reviewing them, we're working on zoning right now, the town plan still has to be done, and if you look, it says the municipality has a duly adopted and approved plan.
Sorry, if you guys can take.
Could you please be quiet so we can hear?
I know I can't hear her.
Thank you.
You know, that the municipality has a duly adopted and approved plan. We do, but we're in the middle of changing them all. And I really don't want to say, yes, we have a plan when we're in the middle of trying to-
Can we ask for an extension on it then?
I, if that's what we would like to do, yes.
If you feel that way, I think you probably should, no?
I feel strongly that, I don't feel comfortable checking them and saying yes because it's asking for municipal plan adoption date. If I had to do it now, most of them are in like 2018, 2019 because we're getting ready to do the new adoptions. I'd rather have it based on our new stuff, not our old stuff.
Sure, okay.
I don't know if that makes sense to everybody, but-
Well, yeah.
No, and then-
And these aren't due to, um, Regional's trying to compile them all now because by January 1, they need to submit them all. So, I'd rather have a conversation with Logan and find out, how do you want me fill this out, knowing that we're in the middle of the revisions for everything?
Okay.
Before we go ahead and sign it.
Okay.
Um, but I wanted to make sure the board was comfortable with that before I went ahead and said, this is-
Well, no, that's-
Yeah, we gotta-
Okay.
I mean, to me, that makes the most sense with the planning commission working on it.
Sure, yep. So let's just ask for an extension on that.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep. And then the enhanced energy plan, we have to come up with some dates for hearings. Is it two, how many hearings do we have to have?
I think we have to do two.
Oh, that's on here.
Um, so the, um, Planning Commission had their hearing. No one attended, even though we sent it to all of the adjoining towns, all 13 adjoining towns.
Okay.
Um, and Regional Planning Commission, no one attended the Planning Commission's hearing. I believe the select board has to have two hearings and then it can be finalized. I think the first one has to be at least 30 days out so that we can rewarn everybody.
Oh, okay.
So, so just a point of order in how we do this, when do we really take a look at this? We, we saw it and we sent it out for them to have their hearings. Do we, we just basically discuss this after we have our hearings? Is that correct?
That would be part of your hearings, yes.
Part of the hearings will do it.
That would be really going over it and then anybody who's, you know, any public comments, if there happens to be any.
And then we take the public comment, go through and make a decision where we're gonna go on it. Okay, just want them to understand the point of order and how we're gonna deal with this.
So the first one has to be at least 30 days from today? And then is the second one have to be spaced, like by sta-, is there a statutorily, um, statutory timeline?
I have to double check. I'm not 100% sure. It might be 15 days. It might be-
I'm thinking it's half.
I think it's 30 and then 15.
I think it's half.
Yeah.
I read them a while ago. There's been a lot happening in my office.
When are you gone? Cause do you want to make sure that we're all here for it? At least 30 days from now. Aren't you?
I'm here the, yeah, 30 days from now I'm gone, so.
So you'll be here for the, oh, it has to be 30 days from today? Or is it 30 days from the Planning Commission?
It won't fit 30 days for it.
30 days from today.
So that would be-
So it would be our August 6th meeting.
Yeah, I won't be here then. I'll be back for the next one.
So August 20th meeting?
We could schedule for six.
Well, because we're-
Are we only in June then?
We're at the end of June.
July, we miss-
We're not 30 days for our next meeting.
It's the 16th.
Two and 16.
So we just missed that.
We're a day shy, yep.
So if we did it August 20th as the first one, then we could do the September 17th one as the second one, if you wanted to do it on select board meeting days.
Yeah, which I think we should, unless anybody has any other-
Yeah, unless we get a whole ton of people at the first one and we have to have a special.
Sure, yeah. But so, alright, so we'll do, so 20th and what was it, so then set into September?
Uh, 9/17.
17.
Cause we don't have enough days between the 20th and the 3rd, I don't believe.
Okay. Alright.
No, by a day. Unless you have your select board meeting instead of on the 3rd, you have it on the 4th of September.
That would be your 15 days.
That'd be your 15 days.
Well, let me, let's just figure, is it about this scheduling? Cause I'd like to get this down in my calendar first.
We can-
I don't care if we do the 4th, I'd be fine with that.
We can go to the 4th, yeah.
Okay.
September 4th, okay.
Do we want to move our select board meeting to that day or just have a special hearing?
Let's do it all at once.
Move it, yeah, move it one day. Well, since it's coming here tonight, it's in a row.
No, I agree. I just wanted to make sure that we were all on the same page. I'm sorry.
I think we are.
Alright, so we're good with that?
Yeah.
Okay. Greg, yes?
So, two things, maybe three. Are we still in agreement that there are three junk yards on Fire Hill Road?
Uh, a collection of stuff is still junk.
Point of order.
Yeah, I know, but we have moved on. We've moved, we're now on a different agenda item. We can't discuss it any further.
I'm just asking where we ended up with it.
We ended up that we're gonna reach out, we're gonna get ahold of our zoning administrator.
Have him take proper action.
He's gonna have to-
Yeah, sure. You will get in touch with him, I'm sure. Thank you. I know you will do that. I know that's-
Anne's been reaching out to him.
And, uh, that's all that will happen.
Well, we'll see. We, there has been movement. Um, not, okay.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you very much. I'm sorry I'm a pain in the ass, but it's my life. I've always been a pain in the ass. A huge one.
That's okay. Have a good night.
Good night, you gotta be.
Alright, um, okay. Moving on to new business. Alright, we got to share this. Okay, uh, fire lane at Kamuta's. Um, so this has been something that's come up before. And I saw that somebody dug up some, some stuff from the 90s to-
I did. Actually, this was easy. There was actually a folder from Dave Atherton on it. It was one-
Alright then.
Hey, could you get him to move down the hall?
So, I've had conversations with Bill Hempel, Brian Kamuta, Chad Ujier about this fire lane that's in Kamuta's parking lot.
Yep.
Um, I want Brian, I believe Brian's now here, if he'd like to speak about it.
Okay.
Um, I did talk to Bill Hempel. He said that he doesn't believe it's been used much by fire trucks. I've gotten different opinions from different firefighters on that. Um, I know that when I frequent Kamuta's, um, the fire lane is used as a pass-through between Arch and Elm on a regular basis.
Sure is.
Uh, there are, uh, delivery trucks delivering to Kamuta's and they're parked there because with their trailers and everything, they're too long for just one parking space. So they park in there. Um, I've seen it used as parking spaces by-
Right.
Uh, normal people. And Chad Ujier said, as part of this agreement, we were supposed to maintain this right-of-way and plow it. And Chad says he's never done such a thing.
Well, and it also says that Kamuta's has the right to move parking spots around wherever they'd like.
Not in the fire lane, no.
It does-
No, it didn't, but-
Doesn't say, doesn't exempt that.
The bus is the only one that can stop.
The bus does stop in there too. Um, when's, when, if segment two comes through, there's two different plans. One is more favorable than the other, but the one that is favorable for pedestrians and traveling public, we would have to eliminate the fire lane. Ethan Pepin was supposed to be here with the two different plans, cause I don't have them from V-Trans.
So, which one of those would be better for Kamuta's? You said one was better for pedestrians, one was better for travel.
This is, this is the Route 7.
Right?
The Route 7, segment two. Um, Kamuta's wouldn't be impacted as much, I don't believe, because of the right-of, the, the-
Okay.
State right-of-way, um, still exists in that area. It's just if there's that fire lane, something with the curbing, it's different one way versus the other.
I see, okay.
I'd have to get the plans from Ethan. Like I said, he was supposed to be here tonight with the plans to show the two differences.
So is anybody opposed to losing the fire lane?
Not anyone that I talked to, other than Mr. Hooker.
No, and I said I wasn't totally against it. Back a few years ago I was and we, we went through a whole process on that. I think it was his dad way back in the day.
Okay.
So how did the fire lane, the fire lane come about? And who owns the land where the fire lane is?
The town.
The town owns the land?
The town does with this-
Yes.
Was from the 1993 thing. So according to Gary Cupfer, we would have to do a quick claim deed back to Kamuta's for that, uh, fire lane.
Is, is there a request to do that right now?
Brian had, had asked about it, um, before. He, this was something that Dave Atherton started, I believe, having conversations with Brian about. And then I picked up the ball because it, there was actually a folder with information in it.
Yeah.
Okay, so there's a request to eliminate that.
Yeah.
Brian, part of the issue is people cutting through from Arch Street to Elm?
Well, I'd say, uh, overall, it's a, being brought to my attention as a, as a topic is with the Route 7. And it's a major safety concern for me now, for a variety of reasons. A, illegal cut-throughs, right? People driving through fast through an area that is a parking lot. Uh, I think it encourages that and it's always- I think the business is dramatically different than what it was 40 years ago, um, with the number of cars. So there are some that during winter, they don't see a parking spot, like to see if label is, "Fire Lane," which is not used. I think, uh, large state vehicles park there. If it was, from my experience, it hasn't been used very often for emergency vehicles. The one time that I did experience it, I was shoveling at 6:00 AM and near the fire lane and was almost hit by a fire person. Was it you, Tom? You were pretty quick to say it wasn't you.
Oh, boy.
It was, and they didn't use the fire lane. They were cutting through tighter and I was shoveling on Arch. So, um, that was on a call out. It was when Ed Keefe had his issue. Ed Keefe had his, uh, his, uh, emergency on there. So, um, yeah, I, you know, it's, it causes, I think, a lot of, uh, extra commotion through that area. I don't think, you know, it's not, we have a lot of vehicles through there. Would it help to be able to eliminate, you know, to have less folks, like redesign, less folks backing onto Arch Street? Might have a different setup of park. I think that would be a benefit. I have not really looked into it very much. This is, David had talked about it. I said, well, he was saying he has the, when Route 7 changes. My big concern was they were gonna put a northbound turning lane that was gonna encroach another 20 feet and I was gonna lose, and I was gonna have like six parking spots. That was eight years ago presented. I've not seen anything since. I don't know the two different plans. I've not seen anything in terms of what option A, option B, or C looks like. I'm looking at having parking, additional customer parking in the back at some point, just over the 8. But, um, and I believe it was called a temporary loading zone at one point for a number of, a number of different uses. And I don't know how it turned into a fire lane. I would be in favor of it not being used. If we do an expansion to the back, if there was a, we would be open to having a, uh, you know, there's a sign on our garage that says "Fire Lane." So I'm not sure if, years and years ago, it was something just for our building, it was called a fire lane, but visitors on our garage-
In the back?
Yeah. So if there was something that, you know, we, you know, could help provide, uh, paths through there, I don't, I don't know. It's still very tight. You know, if any of that something had to go to, you know, go to Elm Street. I'm open to it. I think, I'm open to your discussion.
So, Tom may know or may not, what was the impetus of putting the fire lane there as, for access down?
It was access so that the vehicles don't have to go out on 7.
And then go back down. You can see that now.
Especially as the trucks got bigger.
Right, right.
It's more of a problem going back up on 7. You'd have to almost be in a truck to realize what's happening.
Well, no.
And I realized, we don't have that many calls, but when you do need to, it was always a big help. But I, now I don't have a particular like the game per se. None she did more, so that's not my, my decision, but-
With the redesign of Route 7, hopefully that intersection will be easier to get on the 7 anyway. One would hope.
One would hope, one.
They don't mess it up.
Yeah.
I don't believe, when I met with V-Trans with Chad, we did discuss that whole intersection and they had plans in front of them. I just didn't get a copy of them that day. And it showed, um, it looked like it's gonna be easier and we have discussed with them Arch Street and the whole parking issue down there. Cause you have McClures, you have Hilltop, it's a post office Kamuta's, and with Pittsburgh Village Farms expansion, you know-
It's a dangerous intersection.
You've got five robust things happening that all require parking and all require, you know, most people aren't gonna walk to, most of those, they're gonna drive because they wanna pick up things.
At one time on the plans, I'm, I'm thinking back many years ago, they even had a traffic light at that intersection, I believe. Was the traffic light gonna be there? There was, there was lights that were gonna be similar to what's in Brandon, but-
There's no lights there with the plans that I saw.
Apparently, I don't think there is, but back in the day, there was.
They will be moving the crosswalks and there'll be two of them instead of the one right in front of Kamuta's. Um, it'll be down on, down a ways on both sides. There's gonna be crosswalks there instead of at that.
Right on the corner.
Right on the corner.
That makes sense.
So do we need more input from the fire department before we act on this, or where are we?
Bill was good with it. I've had several conversations. I asked him today, I saw him today. I said, "Do you want to come to the meeting tonight?" He goes, "I don't need to. I told you I'm good with it."
Alright, then, he's good with it.
I'll, I'll make the motion to go ahead with re-deeding this to Mr. Kamuta.
I will second.
Okay, any further questions, discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye? Okay.
This is how government works? This is so easy?
You weren't here.
That was not nice.
Thank you.
Oh, my God. Okay, um, morning Meadow Farm land lease agreement?
I make a motion that we approve.
Second.
Any further questions, comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any questions on the orders?
Why, yes? Can you tell us about our $38,000 grader?
I can. I've left the payables in my office, but I can tell you, um, almost 30,000 of that was, um, labor.
30,000 was labor? Well, they had it for a year.
I wouldn't say they had there, but I don't think it worked though.
They had it for nine months. Um, I can give you a copy of the bill.
They charged us for holding time?
I think they must have.
Or not. Um, Chad said he thought it was better. He had anticipated a $50,000 bill.
Wow.
What was wrong with it?
Basically, they had to rebuild transmission by the sounds. There, the, the descriptions about this long, um, I can go grab it and-
I think we probably-
Yeah, I'd like to see it, but I guess-
Sorry, I forgot to grab the mail.
No, that's fine. So, I mean, to put, I guess that's somewhat putting it into perspective though, if Chad was assuming it was gonna be 50 and it's only 38. I guess we, uh, did okay?
Well, but it's a lot of labor rebuilding. I'm sure the transmission and that thing.
Is that thing like an 80-something? How old is that? It's an 1880-something, right?
Well, yeah.
1880? You mean 1980?
No, I said 80s, yeah, 80s. I didn't know we're in the 80s. Not the 1880s.
That's what it sounded like you said.
No, I knew what you said.
I don't, yeah, I don't see.
I see these machines and stuff, um, because it may be hard to find parts for the thing too.
Oh, yeah.
So we may have had to make stuff, I mean, not find out, I guess.
So it says, complaint leaking engine oil. Upon site diagnosis, found throttle cable worn through oil pan causing leak severe. Machine was brought to shop for repairs, required to fully remove engine for repairs. All panels, battery boxes, fuel tank, radiator, air tank, and any other corresponding components removed to get engine out. Removed oil pan, adapter plate, pickup tubes from pump for repair and reassemble for install with aviation sealant. While in shop, removed times five hydraulic cylinders for repair reseal, including removal, install, and cleaning of components, removal and repair, and reinstall swivel hydraulic motor by- motor by blade. Removal repair, paint, and install of step-to-cab drain clean, change suction line to hydraulic tank with new clamps, new fluid, times-two airline repairs, and multiple engine harness repairs, times-two replace bad hydraulic hoses by blade. Full engine fluid, filter service, hydraulic oil coolant changed upon reassembly.
Nice, so you didn't rebuild the transmission?
No.
He didn't rebuild the transmission.
Everything else.
So, what is the, what is the total labor and what are the total parts?
Total labor is thirty-three thousand nine hundred dollars, total parts four thousand one hundred and four seventy-six, for a total of thirty-eight thousand four dollars.
What is the, what is the rate per hour and how many hours does he have on it?
He just has a total labor.
Wow.
Nah, I gotta have-
I'd like a breakdown on hours.
What's, what is, what's average for, like, heavy machinery like that?
It's ranging from a hundred and twenty-five to two hundred an hour.
Yeah.
Okay.
He's rebuilding hydraulic cylinders, which is all labor and a handful of parts. The seals aren't bad, but it's a lot of labor.
Most in-house is around a hundred and fifty on. I, I don't know who did this, so I have no idea the, the level, but that's what you get at a dealership or a garage.
So, a hundred and fifty would be two hundred and twenty-three hours.
Yeah, but I think I'd, I think before we pay this, I'd like to see a breakdown on that, to be honest with you guys. That's a lot of labor.
Lot of labor, yeah.
And I'm not disputing it took a long time, but I think it should be.
Yeah.
Or does Chad know, maybe he knows.
Maybe.
Chad may know.
It seems like that, it should be just per, like, yeah, part of a bill, any bill, but-
Well, the hours should at least be on there.
That's what I mean.
And the rate.
Yeah.
Not just a total.
Yeah, it's not, we're doing, can we do it?
Yeah, well, yeah, send it around.
Excuse me. Well, yeah, I guess maybe just see if Chad knows, or if, maybe he got something, well-
Just labor is all he got.
Okay. Can we move on, or do you wanna look at that now?
Well-
No, I'm leaving.
We just wanna, you just wanna wait that and get-
I'm gonna suggest a tableless payment, I don't have any issue with anything else on here, but-
Has it been made? We haven't approved that yet.
No, it's approved for payment.
Well, we do-
It has been-
It hasn't been approved by the board, so we're still in the-
I mean, if, yeah, if you could just see if it'll make- Is this, did we use them for anything else? I don't recognize the name.
It's one of the Carreras, um, I'm not sure which one.
Okay, I just-
Yeah. It's down, it's the guy down at Thomas's, right?
Yeah, it's on that.
Some on diesel and hydraulics, that's him, yeah.
Oh, okay, I don't know.
Yeah.
Geez, you could've worked on it, saved us a bunch of money. Aren't you, aren't you a diesel, diesel guy?
I am, but I don't need one of my kids doing that. I mean, some of it, they probably-
Yeah. They'll be on their cell phone looking up what, how'd we do it?
That's okay, I don't mind them doing that.
How's everyone else feel about that? Do you wanna wait to get the hour breakdown?
Okay.
You could sign the bill to just withhold that one.
Can we do that? I've never done that in the, my time here. How does that work?
So, I'm gonna-
Make a note on there.
Okay.
I'm gonna put a note on here, "Hold pending further information."
Alright, do we, do we have to make a motion, uh, vote on that, or just?
I would say yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think because of the, the amount of it.
Okay, yeah, that is a lot of money. Hi, Brian.
So, I will make a motion to withhold this. What I would like to add to that motion is that Anne look into it and email us with it, um, rather than wait two weeks, I mean-
Well, yeah, we don't wanna-
They need this guy to do something again, so we don't wanna hold him up, but we just need some clarification. So, if we can get clarification, and then we can just yea or nay to Anne to do it.
And then the other part of the legal is you would have to bring it up at the next meeting per response, because it is a public.
Yep, yep.
Just the clarification on hours and rate per hour is really all, I think, is what's going on.
Okay.
All parts seem accurate.
Alright, I'm gonna move on then, cause we still, we still-
You need a second and vote.
Oh, sorry.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Kelly. Um, okay, let's, um, recess as select board and open up as waiter, wa- waiter. Water, water wastewater. Um, we, potential switch to quarterly billing, it's twice a year now, right?
Right now, we bill, um, in December and June, uh, so, yes, twice a year.
Is this more, is this helpful for our billing and potentially also helpful for people that have smaller bills?
It, it's helpful on both ends. One, we're hoping that people receive, you know, our consumers receiving smaller invoices at a time, it might be more-
Easier to handle it.
Yeah.
Palatable.
Palatable. And with, with the meters that we have, um, most of the meters, we won't, we can't detect a leak unless we do readings, and right now, we do readings four times a year, but it's harder to gauge. So, if we do four billings a year, we would be able to probably pick up, um, a discrepancy a lot faster.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Make it as large.
And it wouldn't be as large, we wouldn't end up with a twelve thousand dollar bill.
That's a good reason itself.
Yep, that works, I think that makes sense.
So, that was our first thing. Um, and it's also a cash flow thing.
Sure.
Um, right now, you know, we're billing in June, we'll get the money in July, but then we don't get any more money until February, when the bills are due, they usually do the first week of February, so you're not getting that cash flow consistently, it's like all then nothing, then all then nothing.
Motion to move to quarterly billing?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, and then, uh, potential minor rate modifications, I saw a couple things, or at least one thing didn't change, and then some of them were very small.
So, they are very small. So, this, these are, uh, the semi-annual, so these would be divided again in half for the quarters. So, right now, the water bond charge, I'm proposing ten dollars more semi-annually, it'd be twenty dollars annually, and that's to help to cover the new bonds for the segment two planning, the waterline bond for Bridge one oh eight, and the lead survey loan. Lead survey loan, we're supposed to have at least a part of it forgiven, but they haven't told us how much is gonna be forgiven yet.
Okay.
So, instead of, you know, doing five dollars this year and five dollars next year, I'd rather just do the ten dollars-
Yep.
Semi-annually, and then be done and not have to do another.
Okay.
And we're leaving the meter charge alone?
Leave the base charge alone, or no, base charge would go up two dollars, and leave the water meter charge alone this year, that's something that we could change in the future if we wanted to. Un-metered water spout, I recommended going up ten dollars semi-annually, because we don't know what the consumption is on these, they're just, most of them are in the cemeteries, there's a couple privately owned ones that are used. And then the sewer bond charge is gonna go up fifteen dollars semi-annually, this is for bond nineteen. And then the sewer base charge stays the same. Sewer meter charge, I'd like to go up five cents a thousand, it's not a lot, but it would help get the sewer, um, in a better financial position over time.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any further questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Can I back up real quick? Is this a check stub, has this check been written?
That is a check stub.
Yeah, they're probably all written.
They're all written.
They're all written, ready to go, once we sign-
They don't, yeah, I don't think they go out till we-
They don't mail them till we sign it. Not supposed to.
I know. Alright, yeah, let's get, so let's come out of, um, water wastewater and open up as liquor board, we have Hilltop Tavern, third class liquor, um, first-class liquor license for Hilltop and Dollar General's second class.
Motion to approve all.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, um, let's come back out into our regular select board meeting, and unless there is anything else-
Was there, was there a third, or did we vote on the third?
We voted on three.
Just a three.
Okay, there was three?
Okay, sorry.
Yeah, two Hilltop and one Dollar General.
Gotcha.
You gotta sign first.
Oh, my goodness.
We should start having coffee at the meetings.
How's the business, Phil?
Moving into a new location.
Oh, are ya?
Yep.
Was this part of that?
The old tool rental spot.
Oh, okay.
Almost five thousand square feet. Having a big old barbecue Fourth of July weekend, but I guess it, we're probably gonna have part of it in the new place and part of it in the old place, cause we're gonna be in the middle.
Gotcha.
So, the tool rental place, talking down in the gut?
Yep.
Oh.
Yep, we got that whole spot over there, we're gonna have the open covered area, we're gonna put a little track in there, and then eventually, we'll also have the back building as well, which will be an indoor track. Yep. Yeah, I haven't been able to make it because I've just been so damn busy with the business.
We figured that.
How you doing, Alicia?